So to your first question, um, no, no, I have no intention of setting status quo. I think we have to get more citizen involvement. I think just, just being campaigned has shown me that's the approach we have to take throughout the year. We have to continue, if we want this city to grow, we have to be out here in the streets like we on campaign consistently. And it doesn't necessarily have to be us, but we need to make sure that the message is out there and that we are reaching people and we getting the lines of communication across. I always say that if somebody in here is, probably a lot of people in here is a whole lot smarter than me in a bunch of different areas. And I need that. I need them to have a seat at the table so we can know where and what we need to do, how we need to spend money, so forth and so on. What was, what was your second question is?
What is your greatest accomplishment to affect change?
My greatest accomplishment to affect change, uh, I would say at, at this particular point is, 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 is being a school resource officer. Because every day I got the opportunity to affect and change close to three hundred plus kids. And I don't look at trying to change them all, but I look at trying to change one. If I can affect and change one, it's going to trickle down to everybody else. And I didn't, I didn't have that approach and that mindset before when I was just a road officer. So that's something that's taught me. But not just affecting the change of the kids at school, it also made me pay attention to affect the change of my son at home. Because I can't be out here fighting for everybody else and losing my home. So overall, it's, it, it just, it's taught me to give a whole different perspective of, of, of change and, and the change comes from, in my opinion, from the youth. So to affect it, you have to be the change that you want to see as well.
Well, if you're a council member. I hope. If either of us wanted the status quo, we wouldn't be here. There's always this conversation, I never know if it should be said publicly or privately, but there's not a lot to be gained by being on city council in terms of finances, especially not time. And for a guy like me who, who is an entrepreneur and owns businesses, time is money. So, um, I wrestle a lot with the notion of, do I do this? And I work in technology, so I'm already geriatric at forty years old. At fifty, I can't work in that industry anymore. So I'm in my prime doing this. It's a big sacrifice, but I want to live here, I want to retire here, I want to pass away here, I want to make sure it's a place that remains somewhere where I want to do all those things. I want to speak a little bit about accomplishments in the sense of professional, I guess my personal greatest achievements, but then also bring it down to the level of Martinsville. I'm a technology executive for a marketing agency. We walk into organizations that we drastically change for the better and help them completely reshape who they are, how they work with people, how they do better for their customers so that they can be successful. We're completely partnership oriented. I would not have joined that company otherwise, and that's the only model that works. You go deep, you immerse yourself, you become a true partner, then when you truly know something, someone, someplace, some organization, then you can actually establish real goals, real metrics for success. In Martinsville, I've worked with a number of people here, I see somebody here today. I've worked on projects to get more people to move here. I have brought attractions here. The Ben Breakfast that started on Oakdale Street has brought people from all over the continent, not the country, the continent. And when they're here, I tend to send them out to all of our businesses here. I've got a little guidebook that shows them where to go so we can grow business in Martinsville. I think that's one of the things I've done is I've helped show people that we do have things we can do, you can't see people walking the streets. Whereas when I first moved here, I was generally had a city unto myself, wanted to watch my dogs.
Was there another person on that side who had been waiting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He wanted questions. He wanted to ask.
Well, did you want that just for the?
That was just for?
Just for those two. Um, can we let her ask the question because she's been waiting a long time and then we can come back with more to us.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Price. Glenda, G-L-E-N, D-O-L-I-A.
Please, D-O-O?
I have a lot of things going on in my head right now. And I have been to just about all the meetings here lately, talking about the West End and how the project was supposed to be going out there. And last time, people were trying to jump ahead of the people that were already on the list. And, um, I'm totally, and I've stated it before, and I'm going to state it again tonight, no different, I'm dissatisfied with city council for one thing. They send to me that they have everything that they need, not what the citizens, what we need. They make their own decisions as to where this is going to be or where that's going to be. We've had meetings and had companies coming in or, you know, down where, Two Twenty is, where it used to be Kentucky Fried Chicken, we had people who come in at Presbyterian Church and they were going to do this. You keep getting people to come into the community, which means they're not coming here free. You're taking all this money.
Right.
What are you doing with it? We never know what's going on with city council. Because for one thing, like we have said before, the communication is terrible. I, I live right here in the city. I don't even know when meetings are half the time. I have seen you bring, um, paper work out to some places, some, some churches, but my little church, I guess because it's so little, we never get this information, which is okay. Which is okay because eventually we're going to find out about it anyway. But the thing of it is, why? My question. Why is it so important now? You knew this ten years ago. You knew some of this stuff ten years ago. So why wasn't it, why didn't you get on it then? Why wait till now? What's the big thing? You put those houses down there. I lived here all my life. There were houses down on Church Street. They weren't that close to the road.
Can you sum up your question in my question?
I am just a second, thank you. But it, it, you know, like someone said, if I had a little child and I'm going to get in one of those houses down there, which is too expensive for this neighborhood, that neighborhood, this neighborhood, why would I want to live in that house and a truck come by and kill my child or run over me?
Um, the time is up, I'm sorry.
But that's fine.
So, so the question is?
The question is?
Do they?
Why have you waited so long? Why has it taken this long to, you know, try to work out some of these problems? I, I just don't understand.
Is this just for the incumbents or would you like, um, the challengers also to just give their opinion?
I?
Vote.
Vote. I mean, anybody that's going to vote.
Okay, thank you for the question. A couple, uh, a couple of things that have happened here. Number one, COVID and the fifteen million dollars that we got is extra, extra money that we need to spend. And then we've got, we've qualified for a community development block grant. We do these, uh, if we finish up one, we apply for another. We just have finished up the one on the north side of Marshall. We applied, it took three times to get accepted for the Pine Hall project. So the Pine Hall money is fairly new. We know the COVID money, uh, the schedule for it, this is what, fifteen million dollars that we didn't have and, uh, need to get it out to the people. So there is a lot, there's a big chunk of money here that wasn't, wasn't available five years ago.
You didn't give it to the people. Sure, I didn't give it to them.
Well, it's a, it's a process, it's a process of?
Most people order. If you want to talk, you got to come to the mic.
It's a process of, when you get federal money, it's a process of jumping through the red tape that you got to go through. Now, a lot of times, these community development block grants in good times, a lot of times the contractors don't want to get involved with because of the red tape. So I know it, we have had periods when, let's say the economy is good, but you couldn't hardly get a contractor to come out and jump through the hoops that you had to qualify for the, uh, uh, community development block grants. But with the community development block grant and the ARPA money, there is money there that's a once in a lifetime incident and hopefully we'll never have to go through that again, the COVID part of it.
Some of the, I will say, we have projects that are occurring that may not have a huge impact, like a huge, huge one hundred thousand people come in to vote, I mean, to work in the city or anything like that. But I will say, I voted for a solar project and that's to help, uh, reduce our power costs and to help make sure that we have it low, um, in our area. Also in the city, one thing that we didn't have before is an asset management plan. So all of our funds now, we have a base, but we're going to keep some money in case, let's say an emergency happens, just like in your house if an emergency happens, you have to have a little bit of money saved up so that you can be prepared. So I advocated and promoted and got approved an asset management plan. So it's a savings account for the city. Another thing that I push for is, um, the United Ways Program. We have a lot of individuals in our community who are struggling with making sure they're paying their rent. So I pushed to have a renter and tenants program, which is, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand that are going to go to people who are unable to pay their rent. And it works with the tenants and landlords. So these aren't people who just don't pay their rent. These are people who had an experience with COVID, had extreme emergencies. So if somebody's been paying their rent for ten years and then all of a sudden they have one month off and it just messes up everything, that's something that I've, um, supported, voted to support of. And I live paycheck to paycheck having to decide which bill to pay. I do know that everybody, that everybody has issues and things that happen in the community. And I understand that these conversations are very difficult to have, but that's why I'm here, is to listen to the citizens, to do the best I can. I'm not perfect, but I do know I show up, I do know I listen, I do know I care, I have a deep passion for the community. I was born and raised here and that's why I came back, because I wanted to make a difference in our area. And I'm going, and if I'm elected, I'll continue to do that. And thank you so much.
Now we come back to this side of the room. Your name, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Bishop Richardson, the church down on that side. Been today and I'll see you tonight. Councilor Turner.
Oh, pardon, your name, please?
Let me, let me, I'm Harrison Junior, One O Nine, Terry Street. Councilor Dan Turner, my question's for you, and then Councilman Golds. If the reversion does take place, would you completely still be satisfied? Years ago, we went to a town status and then worked then, why it shouldn't work now? Can somebody give me a definite answer, not just a?
I'll answer that. We've never ever gone back to a town status. We've been a independent city since nineteen, nineteen fifties, nineteen forties. We never have gone back to, uh, to a town status. We've always been an independent city in the, in the state, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we, we were voting, uh, six years ago. Kim Atkins was the mayor then and she changed her vote and ran for the, uh, Virginia Senate and we lost three to two. If she hadn't changed her vote, this process would be through. We would have already reverted and been on our way. But no, we never have reverted back to, we were a town, it became a first-class city and then we, we haven't gone backwards. So that's not the right, uh, that's the answer to that question. Did you have another question?
Yes. Are you completely make sure of your man? That you just doing the, if you decide to revert fully, are you are sure, because God knows, God knows we in, in a church, a run. Are you really sure you want this? If you do not, tell the truth, there, God's going to have it. You got to answer God, not to me, but you know these citizens, I mean, we are hurt. We are, we are hurt. We are hurt so bad.
Are you ready to answer? Yeah, I, I am absolutely confident we cannot exist in the current situation we are now. Now, I wasn't part of the negotiating team, I wish I was. I think there's, there is a, there's something short of reverting that is possible. I hope the three-judge panel will come up with that solution where Henry Cannon will come and say, we'll accept those terms. But short of that, I, I, we have to make a decision for the next fifty years. So you're talking about a decision for four years, uh, to stay like ours and everybody keep their job or whatever. This, the city, we are to the point that we've taken the money down from all the enterprise accounts. We're, we're in need, we cannot afford for two separate school systems, two separate jail systems, constitutional officers, that would be a great savings. Fifty, forty-nine of the fifty states have that type of government. Commonwealth of Virginia does not. And I, I feel like about thirty-seven independent cities, half of them are in this situation. I think the General Assembly has realized, we've made a mistake here and let's come up with something, uh, short of, uh, let's give you, to give you an example, when I went into a state senator, I said, let's do away with the school system, Martinsville, Henry County School System, let's do away with the jail system. There are cities in Virginia that have, don't have either. And then we can, uh, we'd, we'd say a city, we would not annex, we can't afford to annex anyway. I don't know why I would put it on the table in the first place. But I feel like there is a solution short of a full-blown reversion that can get the financial money both for city and the county, and we can save all this money instead of having these big duplications of efforts. Did I ask your question? And I, I'm fully, I'm fully confident that we have to revert or we cannot continue on the same path because next year, the budget will be about six thou, uh, six million dollars short or more. And that's, this ARPA money, I, I have opposed to spending it for anything except plugging these gaps when I have to raise taxes.
Time and Jennifer, you can answer the question.
I don't think you were asking if we had already referred it. You were just asking about the first time that it voted and I wasn't on this council at the time. Yes, sir. Um, I do believe that reversion should be enhanced for people. I've heard that, we know that, everybody hears that, they want to vote on and let the citizens decide. City council shouldn't make that decision. We've heard, let the citizens vote. That's what I've heard all, so many times. We talk about what we do for our citizens, what's going away and just let the citizens vote if they decide what to do. But I do want to just ask, you know, we have a three million dollar deficit in the budget last year. We had to field that with that COVID money. If we wouldn't have fielded with the COVID money, we would have had to increase taxes to get that money. We would have had to do so many other things and probably eliminate some of our services that we have. So our bulk trash that we have is something in the city, we'd have probably had to cut police and fire. And also I wanted to say, since I've been on the city council, we have not increased the amount of people that we have working at the city. If anything, we decreased the amount of people that we have working at the city so that we can make sure that we're doing the best that we can and consolidate efforts to be more efficient and effective. And another thing is the, in our HR department, right? We can't just have one person because if then one person leaves, then we don't have a backup and then HR will shut down. So we consolidated our cer, our, um, our departments in the city to where they're basically running at a bare minimum. You hear those complaints about, oh, why didn't they come and cut my rest? Why don't they do, why don't they do all these things? Why don't they maintain more? It is because they're at the bare minimum and that's why we're a complaint-based system. That's why people have to call us to tell us if something, even though we try to maintain it, we can't keep it up. And I know we have some inmate labor that we utilize, that's still buried in. Like we can't always just utilize inmates all the time. I, I think it's a good thing that we have people and we're able to bring them out and give them skills, but that's still stuff that won't allow us to maintain. So I would just, you know, ask for other candidates, where are we going to get this three million, four million, you know, in the budget? I mean, unless we raise taxes, we cut services.
Okay, well, that question was not very perfect. Uh, well, you can now, it's seven fifty-six. So, yeah, seven fifty-six, but the time has gone by fast. It's been very interesting. So we'll have one more question and then closing remarks. So Aaron, you can take it and Elsie, if you're interested, or is your, okay, we'll leave it with Aaron and then your question.
I have a couple of things. First, I've, I've heard a very quick story. Someone, let me know if I'm wrong, by the way. Um, the city had posted a video trying to portray the merits of reversion and they had this with two points, depleting revenues, which is not true. I have the table in front of me for anyone who'd like to look at it from the City Zone and financial reports. And it's my understanding that when I went to the reversion Q and A session at NCI recently, that video was edited to make it just say, okay, well, the reversion argument didn't work very well, so cut that thing out. Now let's just talk about the deficit. And the deficit argument is, um, let me choose my word carefully here, as inaccurate as the depleting revenues argument, my estimation. This is a somewhat complex topic. Um, it's a little bit of financial sleight of hand. I've got a slide here that basically looks at, the way that we're describing that deficit is not truly what a deficit is. It makes it sound like we were racking up three million dollars and six million dollars the next and it's nine the next. That is not how this is working. In Virginia, you have to have a balanced budget. That's one thing to think about. I do think there are opportunities to be more fiscally solvent. I've been going through the budget, like I've said, but I want to make sure we all understand it is not a serious alternative that there be a tax increase of fifteen or twenty percent. All right, I see some heads nodding good. Just want to make sure that that's understood. The only other thing I want to add very quickly, when we talk about the cost savings, I'm going to use again the City Zone report, I want to make sure everyone knows this, when we talk about duplication of services, cost savings, we're talking about cost shifting. We're talking about pushing these things over the county and it's their problem now. We don't care about it, it doesn't impact us, it's their stuff to deal with. That's not how respectful people treat their neighbors. We all need the same services we're getting now, someone sells to provide them. Um, I just want to make sure that we all know, the city's financial consultants suggested that we have currently thirty-one point seven million dollars in operating expenses. We move that to the county, they would have an increase of thirty point six million to them for a net savings of one point one million dollars. That's it. All coming from the schools, by the way, if you're curious, curious what they cite as the difference in the operating expenses. And by the way, they inherit in nearly, our estimate's two million, their estimate's three million dollar deficit when we do this. So we create all sorts of problems for them that we claim to reclaim with now.
Your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Mary Martin. I'm a county resident. And Bishop Richardson, I thank you very much for including the county in this discussion because, believe me, it affects us all. I don't think any five people should have the authority to make a decision for everybody in the city and everybody in the county. That's my point. My question is going to be about the school systems. I'm a former school board member. I went to school here, my children went to school here, I have grandchildren going to school here. And myself, I was an actual graduate of Patrick Peter College when I was forty-two, so I got a little late start. But in voting for reversion, and I guess I'm going to direct this to Danny and Jennifer and Aaron, you and Elsie, please give us an opinion. Every time we voted for reversion, it has been known in the memorandum of understanding and the voluntary settlement agreement that Eric Lund and Tim Hall, yes, the county has our issues too, they decided to dissolve the city school system. I have never heard of such a thing. This neither school board, Henry County School Board nor the city school board had any input in this. Now I know it has been said by certain council members that the city's school system was invited. Dr. Tally says that's not true and trust me, I take Dr. Tally's word on that. He says he wouldn't include it, he wouldn't include it. And now everybody's all upset about the possibility of what happens to Marshall High School. Nobody's talking about what happens to the kids in the elementary school. What happens to them? Where are they going to school? How far are they going to have to ride a bus? A sixteen-year-old can adjust, a six-year-old can't. So, but you voted to just dissolve it without having any kind of discussion with the two educational boards that run the school system. Now everybody has these big concerns. When y'all's vote, you put the hands, you dissolved your school system.
Could you say your?
You get away with your school board.
Could you state your question, please?
My question is, how do you justify your vote for dissolving the school system without input from the educators? How do you justify your vote?
All right, first thing, I wasn't on the?
And then they say that superintendent isn't available to come have a conversation with us? That's not on us. We can't, we can't stop. We can't get, we can't stop, we can't allow them to not look, we, we don't have any say on whether or not they invite that superintendent or what happened. And then I wasn't a part of the discussions with Dr. Tally in this conversation, but I did see what they were inviting, but.
Ms. Martin, my, um, my take on, on the reversion is, is, is very odd to me that, um, when I, when I began my race back in June, when I started paying attention really, I didn't agree with anybody saying that citizens, well, anybody on council was saying that citizens should be getting that right to vote. You know, there was only one person in saying that that I can, I can remember. And I understand that there was a vote taken and there was two votes at one point, but I didn't, I didn't hear that line getting pushed that hard. There was, I think August the nineteenth was the, the last day that, that they had to get something on the referendum so that citizens could have a right to vote. I feel that if they felt that strong about reversion, then they would have had a meeting and they would have had that put on there for the citizens to have that opportunity to vote. So when, when we talk about our school systems and how it's affected, I agree with you that nobody even talks about the elementary students and how they'll be displaced. You know, I, I, I often see, and I, and I make a statement, I see single-parent mothers who drop their, who has the luxury to drop their, their child off at an elementary school right before they go to work. You know, a lot of people in Martinsville base their schedules, their work schedules around the schools. I can't see, uh, an elementary school student in Martinsville having to get up at five thirty, six o'clock in the morning to ride a bus for forty-five minutes to an hour. Those are things that we don't think about when, when, when we making decisions for everybody else. And that's why it's so important to have all the citizens involved and have everybody with a seat at the table and utilizing their voices.
I want to echo Elsie's sentiment and I'm sorry to use this word for like the sixtieth time tonight, but confidence. If we really wanted people to vote, could we have said so before we spent one point whatever million dollars until we're here? I think inside we all know that that was, um, that's a position more convenient or desire of a particular outcome than it is sincerity. Don't know what to do other than just speak the truth. Speaking of confidence, we knew right off the bat there was some, would be some hard things about reversion. One of the hard things is, and this is in the literature, I've got the documents here for anyone who'd like to read it. If you do not work consolidating school system, reversion is going to be extremely uncertain at best and impossible at worst. I don't know what is going on, he said, she said, between the school systems, but again, that needed to have been run out to its absolute max. And you know what? Maybe this is good faith and maybe the Henry County really wouldn't come at the table, but I sure would have liked to have known that first before we went through all these steps. Again, before we spell our money. It's my number one gripe. I know I'm, I'm painted as just, I want reversion dead, dead, dead. You know, reversion to me, frankly, I'm way more upset just about, I don't know what's going on, I don't know what the kids are doing, think about our teachers, this is a huge concern to me. Good teachers are very hard to find and they're leaving a profession. Who do you think wants to sit down after this? Thank you.
We are going to begin the wrap up. Each candidate will get three minutes to give closing statements. Maybe forgot about that. Um, but, but then we are finishing up and we're going to shake up the order just a little bit. We'll start with Elsie and we'll come up this way, three minutes, closing statements.
And feel free to cut a children three minutes if you want to.
Yes, sir. First of all, I would thank everybody who came out tonight, couldn't be anywhere, but just you guys being here tonight shows that you, you want to take a part of the civic involvement of growing our city and keeping it a city, and keeping our schools, city schools. When, when we, we talk about things that need to be done, I think about what I spoke of earlier about the, the four hundred plus mile faces that I get greeted with every morning. I think about that and I think that, you know, destiny rarely comes at a time of our choosing. And leadership. And leadership isn't always born. A person's always born with it. Sometimes you just have to step up to the plate and do what you know is right, regardless of how other people feel about it. Regardless of how it may have ended up affecting you as an individual. You have to do what's right, not just for yourself, but for everybody that's around you, because your decisions affect everybody around you. So when I think of the city council, and if anybody's seen my signs across town, I've got three words at the bottom of my signs. The first one is integrity. Integrity is holding yourself to high esteem, even higher than what everybody else holds you to. It's being responsible for your actions. It's not always making the right decision, but being able to say, hey, I made the wrong decision. I made it, this is why I made it, you know? Keep it up on. The second one is transparency. Saying that, hey, there's nothing to hide here. Ask me anything, anybody that's been to places I've been and talked to me, you can ask me any question, there's nothing to hide. Transparency means that whatever decisions we make, you guys need to be involved. You need to know A to Z of what we're doing. And the last thing is legitimacy. If we do what we're supposed to do for long enough, that feels credibility. That means that you're willing to trust us. Legitimacy means that we've put a professional level back into that city government, and it doesn't look like a reality TV show. It looks like that we're up there, telling business in real, real time, supporting our citizens and keeping their voices as involved as it can be. So I thank everybody to come out and get a chance to vote Elsie Jones, vote Erin Martin.